This is quite a start to a meeting we've never had, I think.
Troy, you can serenade us with a song or something until the meeting starts if you want.
That would be awesome.
I think we've got some Eagles playing in the room, let me go turn it up.
Dr. Ogres, you're beautifully silhouetted there with a blue background. Looks wonderful.
Escaping COVID.
The lead's almost ready, hang on just one more minute. Dave's having a few technical difficulties, but John's helping him out, hopefully it won't be much longer. Sorry, everyone.
No problem, we know how that goes.
I know. You love technology and you hate technology, right?
Exactly.
Okay, we'll go ahead and call to order this regular board meeting of the Council Bluffs Community School District Board of Directors. Mr. Wilson, would you please call the roll?
Dr. Ogres?
Present.
Mr. McGlade?
Present.
Mr. Kazire? Mr. LaFurla?
Present.
Mr. Arthur?
Here.
Ms. Schudeck?
Present.
Okay, as we observe a moment of silence, I guess we could have done that while I was logging in, but we'll just take a few seconds here and collect our thoughts and we will then move forward with our agenda approval after that. So, let's take a second here. Okay, do we have a motion to approve our agenda?
It's a move.
Motion, is there a second?
A second.
Give a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yes, I would like to add an agenda item. And the agenda item is related to the Tracy Stoop sign on the AL Cross Country Trail.
Okay. We may need to delay that because we haven't had 24 hours notice to alter our agenda.
It's my understanding on Robert's Rule of Order that I can make a motion to add an agenda item, is that correct?
It is, but under Iowa code, Iowa code would take precedent over the ability to do that.
I think you're right, I think we have to allow taxpayers' opportunity to know this was on the agenda.
Right.
It's my understanding it was supposed to be on the agenda, and it wasn't.
Dr. Ogres, if I could speak to that, I know that Ms. Smith sent an email stating that it would be on the June board meeting, but after looking through board policy, to name any property or any area within the district, we have to take it to a committee. So, that is why Diane is pulling together a committee to discuss the loop and naming of the loop, and that will be done in July so that we can have it in front of the board at the end of July.
I appreciate the explanation. My understanding is that it's a memorial and a gift that was given by students and not an intention to rename part of the property.
Okay, my understanding was, so this is really good that you're clarifying this for us, Dr. Ogres, is that they were asking for the loop to be named after the coach and asking it to be renamed and name that loop in her name.
The sign is titled after the coach's name of the location of where the property is. It was a gift from students and parents to the coach of a sign of recognition. It was never their intention to rename it.
Okay, so that puts it in a different light, so they're not asking to rename the loop and that the loop always be named after the coach. It is just a gift that while the coaches are coaching, that it would be in that position?
That's correct. It was a sign of recognition built by students and parents that was placed on the property. It was never meant to intend to rename part of the property.
Well, with that information, we, I mean, thank you very much for that information, but as following Iowa code, we would need to have made the amendment to the agenda 24 hours ahead of this meeting. So, at this point in time, I need to deny that adding the item to the agenda.
I would just like to express some disappointment because it was told to us in an email from staff that it would be, so. I agree, I agree. I thought that it was a renaming and that it had to go through a committee. So, I misunderstood what the request was, and I'm assuming that Ms. Smith did also. So, we will ensure, I will go back through board policy to see exactly what steps, and we'll ensure that if it has to go through the board, it will go through in the July meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving tonight's agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And the motion to approve our agenda has been passed. Before us now, we have approval of the minutes of the closed session and the workshop meeting of May 12th. Is there a motion?
Yeah, we approve the work session and closed session of May 12th.
Thank you.
Second.
Give a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of approving the resolution for the minutes of the closed session and the workshop meeting of May 12th signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. And the resolution has been approved. Now is the time for public participation. This is a time for our public to address the board regarding agenda items or any items that are of concern to them. We have individuals who wish to address the board at this time.
Mr. Kazire, we had two that called ahead, Ms. Gina Durfee and Mr. Bob Hanson.
Okay, we'll then go ahead with Ms. Durfee. You have our attention for at least five minutes as we accept your comments here. Okay, you're still on mute. There you go.
I think I have it now, thanks. I'm not driving, for those of you who are concerned, so I'm riding. We're just heading back from vacation. Hey, this is Gina Durfee, and I'm speaking as an individual and on a few items as past president of CBEA, and in that position, I can, I bring a unique perspective to many topics on tonight's agenda, and I can also speak a little more openly than many others. I'd like to address several topics tonight, the first being the superintendent's contract, the extended to which there is no objection. There are some questions about the contract, since the superintendent is part of the administrator employee group. I just question why there is permissible language in that contract and not in other contracts. Again, I am not against this, we are not against this, just clarifying. As for return to learn, will be as the situation changes. Dr. Murillo has been very good about ensuring that CBEA has seats at the table in creating this plan, and Mr. Melbourne has been amazing and transparent in addressing the plan, especially in making sure teachers important to take into consideration teachers who cannot work due to their own health or that of someone in their family, which Mr. Melbourne has already addressed and will be addressed in those meetings. CBEA looks forward to continued partnership with the district on this. It will be imperative that teachers are allowed and encouraged to focus on emotional health of themselves and their students, specifically their students. This means we will likely lose ground on academics. We all need to be okay with that as kids first need to connect and trust to build relationships before they are capable of academic learning. Board members need to be able to ask questions of staff other than executive administration or administrators in order that they are not getting perspectives that are formed when like-minded people discuss topics that are presented to the board and what may be formed in a group think atmosphere. In addition, this ensures the transparency that I hear often Dr. Murillo and Mr. Melbourne seeking. Lastly, when someone speaks, like I am tonight at a board meeting, it's often too late for the board to seek clarification from anyone outside of executive administrators. Transparency could also be improved by having a board member at table for negotiations with CBEA this year. That does not mean that the board does not trust their negotiators nor that the CBA does not trust the district. It means all interested parties are at the table communicating, leading to even more transparency. As you may have heard today, CBEA representatives met to discuss changes in personal leave. I'd like to point out that the only CBEA members who had access to this originally were the Labor Management Committee, followed by a sharing with the Executive Board of CBEA. The Executive Board chose to share that information yesterday with teachers, and it appears that some teachers may have emailed district administrators and school board members. That was not solicited. The district did not make this information public until the agenda items with attachments were added today. CBA cannot be, cannot share information with all teachers as not all teachers are members. Therefore, the onus of communicating with staff lies with the district. While the Labor Management Committee meets with, collaborates with, and makes suggestions during Labor Management Committee meetings, that does not mean that CBEA always walks away with a compromise they've agreed to. It almost always does. It means that we sat at the table, discussed our concerns, and Mr. Melbourne and Ms. Warren always hear us out and always get back to us in a timely manner after meeting with others. Again, that does not mean we are necessarily in agreement, usually we are, but not always. I'm advocating for continued cooperation between CBEA and CBCSD. I'm advocating for continuing and improving transparency. I'm advocating for prioritizing emotional health. I'm advocating for the foot of all staff and students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And next up, we have Mr. Hanson.
Dave?
Yes.
Someone had pinged to me and said that the community cannot hear. There's not sound going out to the community right now? Can we check that?
I'll check with Daniel.
Okay.
Just to clarify, is that across channel 18 or is that across the screen?
Let me find that.
Okay, looks like they're working diligently, so we'll get confirmation here in a second.
Going right to the source.
And Mr. Kazire, the board, the meeting is being recorded, so it will be available for the public.
Okay, thank you.
Right on the TV.
Thank you.
Okay, while they're working on that, we'll move right ahead with Mr. Hanson. Mr. Hanson, you have our attention.
Thank you and good evening to everyone. I wanted to completely agree with everything Gina had to say. She said it very well, and I just wanted to reiterate that my experience in the last 24 years working for the district and the last 14 years as the negotiations chair has that we always work together. Mr. Melbourne has been very transparent in all of his communications, and I just wanted to say that we look forward to continually, continue working in such a positive manner, and we'd like to move forward from this point and look forward to doing that again. I just wanted to reiterate exactly, Gina was very, very well said. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board this evening? Okay, the indication is we have no one else, so at this point in time, we will move ahead with our superintendent's report. Dr. Murillo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Dave. At this time, I'm going to turn over this portion of staff recognition to Ms. Diane Ostrowski. She is going to introduce our three staff members of the year, and we could be prouder of these staff members, and when you hear Diane read a little bit about them, you will see why they were selected this year. So, Diane, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, and what a wonderful evening to get to celebrate some outstanding folks who I think each of them would say that they're reflective of their peers, and we ought to be proud of everyone in the district, and these three individuals are representing them as our employees of the year. So, it looks like we have some fans with some of our honorees tonight. Lynette Peterson, may we start with you and celebrate you as our district's support staff member of the year?
Thank you very much.
Okay, so Lynette is the Sam at Hoover Elementary School, and Mrs. Hetrick, the principal at Hoover, along with others nominated Lynette for this honor, and I'd like to just share just a few snippets about it, and we'd be here all night if I read everything, but please know that I'll send these full nominations to each of you so you can read what your nominators shared about you. I'll start by saying, the nominator said Lynette is the heart and soul of Hoover. She begins almost all of her conversations with students, and I bet with staff, by saying, "I believe every problem can be solved." She makes sure to build positive relationships with students and families while also holding them accountable. You can tell just by being around Lynette that she would do any and everything within her means to help one achieve within the means at her disposal. Finally, Lynette embodies everything Council Bluff Schools works so diligently to be for the community, and we are very proud, I know I love getting to work with you. And Lynette, congratulations, and please introduce your friends and family that are with you tonight.
Well, sure, I kind of had a surprise on some of my kids, named Melissa and Maddie and Andre and Jalen, who is actually a para at College View. So, he knows what a great district we have and how supportive they are, and I agree wholeheartedly what you said earlier, Diane, about the people that we work with and that that's the one thing that I think helps us all do our jobs better, is iron sharpens iron. And I know I'm biased, but I think Hoover has the best administration, the best office staff, the pares, the certified staff, and our janitorial staff are just a great team to work with. They all love kids, and with that is our goal, we're all on the same page.
Wonderful. We'll get a chance to feature you and the other as we prepare for next year, and you know, it's kind of become a tradition to put a video together so that we can share that with more broadly than with even our staff. So, we'll look forward to connecting with you on that.
Thank you.
Mr. Kazire, may I go on to the next one? Oh, that's okay, we're. Wonderful, wonderful. Well, next I would like to recognize, just in my tiles here, we'll go across, Mr. Casey Moran is our principal of the year, and I'd like to share a couple of highlights, if you will, from the nomination for Casey. It came from his peers, by the way, of other principals throughout the school district who have a chance to work side by side with him. And what I'll start with is that Casey Moran has been a principal for over five years. He has been at Lewis and Clark, Bloomer, and now Rue Elementary. And the nominator shared that when Casey moved to Rue two years ago, he had, he brought with him a can-do positive attitude with 100% focus. His efforts are paying off, the nominator says, by having Rue score in the distinguished category in the Iowa assessments, on the state report card, I should say, and his school has been named a finalist for the National Blue Ribbon Program. And we are very excited to hear how that application goes and to hear more good news, I'm sure. Casey has a vision and excitement for a bright future for all students. He models professional behavior and maintains expectations for his staff and for students that align with district goals and helps all improve and achieve at higher level. Even as Casey, even case, excuse me, Casey even serves as a leader among his peers and is a new principal mentor, which is a really, really important job, and I know that he's made a positive impact on our new administrators. So, Casey, congratulations, and please introduce your wife here and share with us a word if you'd like.
Well, thank you very much. I feel very honored. This is my wife, Julianne, who, you know, supports me in every way. And I just want to say that I was really caught off guard by this, and you know, I've had great leadership modeled for me in the district since I've been here when I started my career, and I've had leadership opportunities, and you know, every staff I've worked with has made me stronger and better, and the administrative team is amazing, but we also couldn't do our work without the executive cabinet and our school board supporting us. And I also want to give a quick shout out to the Council Bluff Schools Foundation for helping with this trophy. We really appreciate it and thank you.
Yes, wonderful. Thank you, Casey, and thanks for being here, Julianne. So, our licensed staff member of the year is Ms. Brittany Beatty. We're glad to have you here tonight, and I'd like to share a few words about Brittany that her nominators provided to us. And so, Doreen Canuth is the principal at Carter Lake. Brittany is a fifth grade teacher and has been with the district five or six years, so she's fairly new in her career but has already made an impact. So, Brittany exemplifies what it means to be a Council Bluffs Community School District educator who helps students achieve more. Key to Brittany's success is building stronger relationships with her students. She meets them where they are, holds high expectations, believes deeply in their ability to succeed, and creates a safe, caring environment in which students can learn. Sounds perfect. In fact, Brittany has created a collaborative community of learners in her classroom. Her influence extends well beyond the classroom. She has helped establish Mission Mondays at Carter Lake, their hashtag Carter Lake Love brand, and their school-wide house system where students in pre-K through 5 are part of a given house and are recognized daily for positive behavior and contributions. Brittany was instrumental in organizing the We Miss You Parade as we were entering in the early stages of our closure. And finally, a couple of things her nominator said. When faced with challenges, Brittany seeks solutions and perseveres until she sends. She and her students meet the outcomes they have set. And her nominator shared, she has always said how important it is for parents and teachers to work closely together on the behalf of students and to ensure their success, and Ms. Beatty does that so well. So, congratulations, Brittany, and you're welcome to say a few words if you'd like.
Yes, thank you so much. Like Casey said, I was very surprised to have everyone show up at my door, but I truly could not do this without the awesome support of everybody that is in the district, and the amazing staff at Carter Lake pushed me through every single day. They are truly some awesome people, and I could not do this without any single one of them. So, this truly goes to every single person in our building because we, sorry. We work really hard to help support our kids. Just, they need all the help they can get, so we try what we can, and you know, we work really hard, like I keep saying, but I couldn't do this without everybody in our building and the district. but I couldn't do this without everybody in our building and, and the district. I'm so lucky to be part of this, the building at Carter Lake and in our district. So thank you so much.
And we did have, we did have fun going around on a, on a May day and visiting each of our honorees and surprising them at their doorstep. So we are very pleased to then tonight extend that fun. And they are all, a couple of them referred to their trophies that the Council Bluffs Schools Foundation has sponsored for us as part of the overall employee recognition program. And so if, all right with you, Chair Cozire, I'm going to turn the floor over to Mr. Chris LaFerla, the executive director of our Council Bluffs Schools Foundation for a few words as well.
Sure.
Yes, thanks. I'm honored to be able to play double duty tonight and virtually present each of you with a little letter for me and a check from the foundation for $500 that I'll be dropping in the mail. Just as a small token of appreciation and recognition for the work that all of you do. The foundation is very proud to support the student and staff recognition programs of the year. We think it's really important to recognize accomplishments and the hard work. So on behalf of the Board of the Directors of the Council Bluffs Schools Foundation and our staff, congratulations to you, Mr. Moran, Ms. Beatty, and Ms. Peterson for this recognition. And thank you for everything that you do for our kids every single day.
Yes, thank you very much. This is always an exciting meeting where we recognize those staff members that, that have gone over and above their, the call of duty. And the only thing that would be better is if we were in person to be able to congratulate you. But short of that, thank you so very much for what you do on behalf of our students and our staff in the district. We really appreciate what you all do. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Cozire. At this time, if you don't mind, we'll provide into our student achievement.
Yes, why don't we do that?
Great. I'd like to invite Dr. Vorthman to share his screen and to take us through the return to learn plans overview. And as we're moving into that, again, thank you so much, our employees of the year. It was so much fun coming to your house and surprising you. Dr. Vorthman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Dr. Murillo. It's my pleasure tonight to provide some information to the board and to our community about our return to learn plan for the fall of 2021. And as part of our return to learn plans, we've been working over the past several months to be able to make some really important decisions around what school may look like come the fall, given the current COVID-19 concerns. And so as we begin tonight, I just want to start with a few key considerations that kind of underpin the development of these plans that have been, have been in progress over the past couple of months. And all of these, the plans that I'm going to talk about tonight are still a work in progress. And we continue to solicit feedback as, as we refine them and try to make them better. The, the first plan that is required is our remote learning plan that the Department of Education is requiring all school districts to put together by the first of July. And we will certainly meet that goal. That plan is, has gone out to staff members to ask for feedback. And we're currently working on an FAQ section to that document that will allow us to further provide clarity around what implementation may or may not look like. So the first and foremost thing that we really took into consideration as we developed these plans was ensuring that our students and staff members are healthy and safe when they're at school. And so that thread cuts through all three of the plans that I'm going to talk about tonight. The onsite plan, the remote plan, and the hybrid plan. Secondly, we want to make sure that folks understand that what we experienced in the spring, the abrupt closure followed by a voluntary at-home learning approach will not be replicated in the fall. Even in the remote plan where students may be learning at home, they will be receiving direct instruction under the direction of a highly qualified teacher and interacting with their peers on a regular basis and, and making academic progress. So while we were proud of the work that we did in the spring, we know that it did not meet everyone's expectation and was not necessarily something that we wanted to repeat for the fall. Third, all three of these plans may be used flexibly. And so it's important to remember that based on data at the time of when school opens and throughout the school year, we may be moving in and out of all three plans at various times throughout the school year. And that could be true of the entire school district or it could be true of individual buildings. So what we, we've talked about as we developed these plans was thinking about how we would stop and start school in any one of these three plans as we move throughout the school year. Fourth, we want to make sure that the thread that lines that goes through all three plans is one of consistency for scheduling, for continuity of instruction for our staff and our students, and to ensure that students have curriculum pacing in all three plans so that they don't lose ground academically as we move through the school year and that we don't create greater gaps of learning loss as a result of the need to move in and out of these different contingency plans. We also recognize that our teachers will need specific professional development to implement remote learning and hybrid learning, and that it's something that will be new to all staff members. And along with that professional development comes grace as we figure out how best to educate our students in this new sense of normal, where much of the instruction may occur in a virtual environment. And then last, and importantly, every member of our school community, from our teachers and administrators, paraprofessionals, to our facilities and maintenance, nutrition, library clerks, central office staff, and bus drivers, everyone will have an important plan to play, or important role to play, rather, in each of the three plans that we're going to discuss tonight. And regardless of whether we are in a remote, a hybrid, or an onsite plan, there is an essential job for each person to do to make sure that we're able to operate schools safely for our students. So I'm going to provide a real high-level overview tonight of the three different phases of return to learn as we're kind of characterizing how we reopen schools in the fall in three different ways. The remote plan is an option that we may need to utilize where all students would be learning from home. The hybrid plan would include students learning either at home or at, at school site. And the onsite plan will have every, everybody learning in a school building. And so I just want to take a few moments to give you some comparisons about what these plans may look like, how they may be similar and different through several lenses. So first of all, when we look at instructional delivery, the instruction that will be provided by our teachers in the remote plan will be completely virtual. And that's where students will be at home and teachers will be providing instruction either from the school setting or from their own home. In the hybrid setting, we envision that that instruction would incur about 50% virtual and 50% face-to-face. And obviously, in an onsite plan, all instruction would happen onsite. In terms of the daily schedule for courses, all students would meet virtually according to their daily schedule on the remote plan. The hybrid plan takes a little bit different approach in that every other day, students would be onsite. And the days that they're not onsite, Tuesday through Friday, they would be at home, but taking part in their classes virtually. So instruction would be broadcast from the school site. Half of the students attending in the classroom, half of the students attending remotely, and everybody accessing the same instruction. Because Monday is a shortened day for professional release, professional development, that would be a virtual day for all students. And then in the onsite plan, all classes will resume in our school buildings onsite every day. In terms of student attendance, students would be required to attend at home. And they would be checked, teachers would check in with them every day and provide instruction to them every day. In the hybrid plan, students will be required to attend 50% of the coursework at home, 50% of the days onsite. And in our onsite plan, students would be required to attend onsite all five days of the week. In terms of student work in the remote plan and the hybrid plan and the onsite plan, all student work will be required and all student work will be graded. And that is to ensure that students maintain progress in their courses and that they continue to make adequate gains academically throughout our curriculum. In terms of teacher attendance, in the remote plan, teachers would provide instruction from their homes that has an asterisk next to it. Because if it is safe to do so, teachers may be able to provide instruction from their classrooms. Or if they need materials that are only available in their classrooms, they may be able to broadcast instruction directly from their classrooms. But once again, that's if it is safe to do so in our, in our school buildings. In the hybrid plan, teacher attendance will be onsite every day because they will be teaching to half of the students in front of them physically and half of the students online. And then in an onsite plan, all teachers will be in our buildings. In terms of mitigation efforts in the hybrid plan, we will be putting protocols in place for temperature screening. And the, the major feature of the hybrid plan is the reduced occupancy load that we will have about half as many students attending every day, which cuts our class size in about half and allows us to reduce the number of students that are present on any given day. We also have protocols for social distancing and enhanced cleaning protocols as well to ensure that our buildings are safe and healthy for students and staff members. And then once we are onsite, many of those things will continue to occur somewhat in a different fashion. But still, as long as we receive guidance from the Iowa Department of Public Health, Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, and the Potomac County Public Health Office, we will adhere to the mitigation efforts that are suggested. So that is a very high-level overview of what we envision the three possible plans looking like for the fall. At this point, we do not know which one of them we will need to implement come August. We will be watching the data and the guidance that we receive from the governor's office as well as, as public health as we look to making those decisions prior to opening of school. With that, I would answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, are there any questions from the board that they have for Dr. Vorthman?
Hey, Dr. Vorthman, it's Jill Agress. I just have a couple of questions for you.
You bet.
For sharing the information. I received an email from a staff member and they had some concerns and questions. The first concern was that they received information about online learning but didn't receive any information about plans related to hybrid or normal learning. So just wanted to give you that feedback. The other concern was that there was some discussion about cameras being in classrooms. I don't know if you can confirm that?
Sure. First of all, regarding the hybrid and onsite plans, we have not published those for feedback yet. We just finished the remote plan. It was the one that's required by the Department of Ed. So it's the one that we completed first. And hybrid plan and onsite plans will be shared when they are, when they're in a, in a complete form. Tonight, what we wanted to do is kind of provide a high-level overview of where we think the major features of those plans will, will line out in the future. Regarding the cameras in the classroom, that is correct. As part of the hybrid, hybrid models, we are looking to invest in what are called owl cameras. And they're similar to what you might find in a video conferencing setting professionally. But what they allow is for students to interact with each other virtually so that they pick up on the voices of the students that are participating, both online and physically in the classroom. And so it greatly enhances the engagement of students, both in the classroom and those students who are online.
I think we had an owl format in our last closed session. Would those formats be recorded at all? There was a concern that it would be recorded. And what if students can't be recorded? Who has access to the footage? That was some of the concerns that were sent to me in an email.
Yeah, good questions. So the, the Google meets that students participate in remotely and in the hybrid plan are recorded and archived in the Google Classroom only for the students that are in that classroom. So it'd be no different than students sitting side by side or students in the classroom virtually. And they're archived and to enable students to, in certainly in a remote setting, to be able to access that instruction at a time that is most convenient to them if they're unable to take place in real time due to their, their home environment, their schedule, or if they have internet access issues that prevent them from participating in real time.
So will we have to obtain consent from those since it's being recorded?
Actually, we already do in our assurances. And there's an opt-out feature from, for media release that is currently in our, in our registration forms.
Thank you. You had mentioned that you're still kind of planning things out with regards to the remote hybrid onsite. What does the timeline look for when you think that would be completed? And then the second part of that question would be, what does training look like for teachers and when they would start with that?
Yeah, so we're hoping that the hybrid plan is finished by the end of July and that the onsite plan goes right after that. Obviously, the, once the hybrid plan is complete, the onsite plan is very easy to put together because it's really an extension of the hybrid plan and figuring out ways to basically run a, without the reduced occupancy load and figure out which mitigation efforts need to be taken into consideration. With regard to professional development, we will be launching next week the registration for annual summer academy, which will be held virtually this year. And we have a full contingent of plans in place to provide virtual sessions for teachers on topics ranging from using Google Classroom to teach online, to Google Meets, to using the owl cameras to engage students. And all of those, teachers will be able to participate in, in real time and will also be archived for teachers to refer back to as they need additional support throughout the school year. Secondly, the teaching online and virtual environment will be the focus of professional development for next year. And we're working on a schedule to carve out professional development time on Mondays through a, an approach that we call learning days where we are able to have district-wide common professional focus, professional development at multiple spots during the school year. So there are refreshers built in along the, the school calendar.
Thank you. I just have one last question. For our special ed students, what does this look like if they're not on an onsite environment?
Great question. So what we're looking at right now, we will continue to implement the IEP in the remote setting to the greatest extent possible. Students will, will receive services as possible, both if they're receiving OT or PT services, speech. Those, we're working with the AEA right now. And we're waiting for the AEA to provide guidance on what that looks like in July for offering those in-home services. In the hybrid model, we are suggesting that those students' decisions are made by IEP teams to determine whether or not students should attend 50% face-to-face or up to 100% face-to-face, given the individual needs that they may have. Given the individual needs that they may have. And so IEP teams will be engaged in, in making some of those decisions as we move forward on a hybrid plan.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Dr. Vortman, first, I guess I just want to recognize that. I probably have no idea the amount of work that has gone into creating a plan like this. So I just want to recognize everyone who's been a part of developing these plans. I can't imagine how much work it is. And I'm, I'm sure a lot of it is new, uncharted territory for, for all of us. So, you know, I'm thankful that you are putting all of this work in. Ms. Durfee commented earlier about keeping the social and emotional health of our students and staff. Sort of on the forefront. Are there parts of the plan that are being developed that address those needs?
Yes, in fact, it's, it's specifically social, emotional wellbeing where students and our staff is called out specifically in both the hybrid plan and the, and the remote learning plan.
Okay. And I, one, I'm just one other question. I know that there are other school districts across the country that are looking at allowing families. To determine or opt into utilizing a, a virtual learning format, even if school is in the onsite plan? Is that something that we are considering or have we gotten there yet?
Yeah, Dr. Merle, you want to talk a little bit about that?
Yes. So first, I want to also say that Dr. Vortman and his team have been doing a wonderful job working together. So thank you, Chris, for acknowledging that and for the whole cabinet that have been putting in hours on this. But we hope after the Fourth of July to have a really solid draft that we can then share with the staff. We were taking comments on the remote learning plan that was required by the state all the way up. Until I think Cory made three more revisions after we received the staff feedback. So we will still do that. This won't be a final plan until the staffs had time to give us some feedback on it also. So when we talk about parents that would like to maybe place their students completely remote out of concern. We will be able to allow that this year. So since we have the virtual school completely set up and that plan will, will be approved by the state. Then we can offer those parents to go on the remote and stay on remote and be in like a hybrid plan. Where other students are in the classroom and their students work remotely all year or until they feel comfortable returning. We also have some exciting news that the district was approved as a virtual school district that we can offer. Our course is online now and they are accredited. We are one of the five now, five districts in the state of Iowa. That has been approved to be a provider. And students can open and roll into our district from any place in Iowa. So we're really excited about that. We've still got to work through a few more details and we'll be doing a press release soon. I also again want to give a shout out to the teaching and learning and the leadership of Dr. Vortman. For getting the approval and the plan through the Department of Ed in Des Moines and getting us that certification. So thank you, Dr. Vortman, for that. So those will be the popular options for our parents. And then after we get the feedback from our staff, I have told our parents that after July fifteenth, I'll be communicating again. And in that communication, I will go ahead and lay out those options also for our parents that might be concerned. Or have a child that may have a health, you know, underlying health concern that they're worried about them returning to school immediately. And we will make accommodations for those parents and those children.
Thank you.
Ms. Shudak, it appears you have two questions?
Yeah, Dr. Vortman, again, I, I would also like to second or third the, the effort. Looks like a tremendous amount of effort and I really appreciate the, the time and the effort that was put into the plan so far. I did have just a, a few quick questions and again, some of it might be a little bit too in the weeds. But just questions or thoughts that are on my mind as we kind of prepare. I know, you know, personally, my work is looking at in the future plans to return as well. So this is a topic, you know, I think close on most, most people's minds. A question or even, I don't necessarily think it's a concern, but a question is, is how we, have we thought about instead of going every other day, every other week or every two weeks? And the reason I ask that is because if the parent works outside the home, they might be on that every other week or every two weeks. And then if somebody gets sick, they would be home for the two weeks to get fully well before returning back in. So I just wanted to, to see if there was any thought to switching that to a weekly status or a bi-weekly instead of an every other day.
Go ahead, Dr. Merle.
Ms. Shudak, we hadn't thought of that. What we are trying to work closely with is the superintendents in Nebraska in the Moat Group. And then also with the superintendents in the Potawatomi County to kind of see how we're all lining up. We really looked at many different options. I think this is the third or fourth one for especially our elementary. And would we go every other day? Can we go half day? Should it be one week on, one week off? And we really followed some research that was done nationally, kind of here and some virtual conferences. And one thing that they had studied other countries and some other districts. And they really felt like every other day was the best plan. When we looked at what UNO was doing in Metropolitan Community College. And then now Iowa Western has adopted the kind of the same philosophy. And that is that they are seeing at least a professor every other day. And they just feel like it's really critical to keep the students connected in the structure, feeling safe. And then having that feedback from the teacher and continuing to be able to join on those off days and be a part of their classroom. So we could certainly continue to watch that. And if that becomes a trend, I think we continue to pivot. The one thing I know that everyone in the community realizes is that is so fluid. That what we're even looking at today may not be what we can do at the end of July. But we're trying to do as best as we can to prepare for the fall. And continue just to keep our community, parents and staff informed of any changes that may come from the Public Health Department or from the Department of Ed.
Yeah, absolutely. No, I, I completely understand that it, it's pretty fluid. I was just thinking more of a, you know, trying to arrange a work schedule for somebody in elementary. Or, you know, to coordinate with the, with the parents' work or daycare or things of that nature. It could get a little bit more tricky on a day-to-day basis, but I understand that the concerns there. Just a few more questions. I see, you know, the mitigation efforts, the temperature screening, the reducing the social. But I don't see anything about masks. And I know that that's been a topic on, on people's that they would like to, you know, help out by starting to work on masks for their classrooms, things of that nature, to kind of go that way. Will be, will we be requiring masks for those that are onsite?
At this time, we are not moving forward with requiring. We are strongly encouraging that our staff and students wear masks. We have been talking about if we would have a teacher maybe with an underlying health condition. That students that go into that classroom would be required to wear a mask. But right now, we're holding this strongly encouraging until we see what the Public Health Department states in July or the first of August.
Okay. And then just last question that I have, and it's kind of a two-parter. Will we be solely relying on the governor or will we be more, and I know that Dr. Vortman touched on this a little bit. Or more about what's going on in our, in our community to make those changes? And then who would make that call? Would that be the executive board? Dr. Merle, would you bring that to the school board like we did when we went out? How does that process work? I know that's a topic on the community's mind as well.
I think, of course, we will hear what the governor has to say and, and take in consideration and the Public Health Department from the state. But I think also another strong consideration, since we are a metropolitan community with the Omaha schools. That we will look inside of what's occurring here and work with our emergency management center. And also with our Public Health Department here and working with our mayor. And then I would bring that recommendation to the board and, and have the board approve that as I did last March.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Dr. Merle. And Dr. Vortman, sorry.
Mr. Arthur, it looks like you're ready to ask some questions?
Yeah. I had a question on, has the state given us, us any guidance yet on what criteria are needed for a return to onsite?
No, not at this time. We have not received them.
Okay. And have they said anything like to you guys about, hey, if, if we were to start today, here's where we might go? Or they just pretty mummified?
Yeah, we attend the Department of Education's webinars every week. At this point, they've not tipped their hand one way or the other, despite being asked to do so on every webinar. I think every superintendent in the state would love to have a sneak peek into what the governor may be thinking. But, you know, we, I think we will get some additional guidance, what the State Department led us to believe in early July. That will help us make some decisions for the fall.
Okay. And while we are, as a board, in a district, I assume if they say. Since we have to operate with, in whatever the law or the regs are saying. I'm assuming we cannot go back to school full-time unless they said the, the state was cleared for that, correct?
Correct. So we, we would have to abide by any emergency order that the governor has put out. And if there's not an active emergency declaration, then it will fall to local control.
Okay. And then if it went, if they said, yep, schools can go back onsite or they can do as their own. I assume that we have the power to choose any of these options if we so chose. Based on what we felt as a district were the risks inherent in our community?
Yes, that's what we've been told is that if there's no active emergency order, then local control will prevail.
And then on the, I guess the side that concerns me a lot is if we continue to be, say, remote. Is there any, are we, are we as city communities giving feedback to them on the impact on families? On, you know, the social emotional wellbeing of kids? Just if they were at home for the next six, seven months? You know, the, the, almost more like the economic impact of parents having to, you know, find some sort of. Ability to have those children watch the school, you know, at home? Like I, I see all these other things outside of this that aren't tied to the schools. And I'm, I'm wondering, you know, what feedback they're seeking from the communities, if any?
Currently, the state hasn't asked for any feedback, but the state did do a lot of work with us when we first went out around the social and emotional learning. And are expecting us to have a strong component in our plan to address that when we go to hybrid and onsite. And then really stressing that. I know that we're working also, as you know, with Kids and Company. And Kids and Company did provide some childcare. And it's something that we continue to work to see how we can assist and help our families if we would be remote. My hope is that we can at least be in hybrid, if not fully onsite. And really looking at how do we mitigate and social distance our students? And we are really working on, when we do our return to open presentation to you at the end of July. We've been working and my facility custodial staff, they have been doing a fabulous job. Really assisting us in looking at how we can de-identify rooms. How we can mitigate the spread in our cafeterias, on the buses and in our classrooms. So there's a lot of work that we're doing. If you would ask our, Des Moines asking for any input or suggestions from us, at this time, no. But I do know that with the end of July, I plan to try to pull back together our superintendent group from the Potawatomi County. To really see, we met at the first of June, I believe, or the middle of June. Just to see if everybody was going to hold an open school on a regular calendar date that we already had set. And they all agreed they were. So now it's really looking at how do they feel about the three plans and where do they expect to open? And then us all looking at what would be some criteria or conditions that would move us from hybrid to onsite if it became a local control? And so those are some of the things that as we get closer to, I would probably say about the twentieth of July. We can really begin to take some deep dives and have some really good conversations. Because hopefully, we'll begin to see the curve start to decline instead of increase. And our students will have an opportunity to return to school.
Okay. And a question maybe, maybe for Chris in his past, and also, you know, for you, Dr. Merle. I don't entirely understand the, I understand the role that Kids and Company plays. But in my mind, it's the same kids at the same schools. So I often question how that's safe and, and school is not safe for our kids? Or is that just more, is that just more the school system versus, you know, versus the, this nonprofit?
Well, I think from a childcare standpoint, the Department of Human Services would, would argue that childcare is an essential service. That needs to be offered during emergency situations so that, you know, people can be at work. And, you know, if there is a hybrid or remote situation this school year. Every community is going to be challenged with trying to satisfy a childcare need, demand that will be overwhelming, I think. At Kids and Company, what we're doing right now is trying, we're building plans that would fit with each of these options. If they had to happen in the fall. Typically, when school is not in session, Kids and Company offers full-day childcare services at consolidated sites. So maybe one or two school buildings where we will have a limited capacity to serve. Student, you know, and a number of kids that's determined by the Department of Human Services. We're doing that now for summer childcare. In the hybrid format, we would have to go, we'd have to find somewhere outside of the schools. So we're currently looking for alternative off, off-site locations that we could offer full-day childcare services. And then we would need to work with the school district to make sure that those students have. You know, while they're at childcare, that they have access to a space where they can do their virtual learning while they're at Kids and Company.
Okay. I guess I just, I wonder why, you know, the Department of Ed planning, they don't, they don't look at schools as childcare. But in reality, in a situation like this, you know, if parents are not able to go to work, then every child theoretically could need childcare. If you couldn't go to work, there's every, every elementary up to certain age. You know, anyone in a, maybe an unsafe household. I mean, I, I just, it's, it's odd to have. It's, it's just, it's a weird situation, I guess, is what, and I am curious how the Department of Ed looked at it.
It is a very peculiar place that we're in, and you're right, Joy. Every family needs a safe place for their children to be. And we know one of the safest places is for them to be at school. So that's why it is our hope that we'll be able to open our doors in the fall. And be able to at least start in a hybrid situation, if not fully onsite. And that is our goal and just hoping that the pandemic comes to an end. Which we know it won't be at a complete end, but at least it slows and we are able to bring our children back.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there a space for paraeducators to maybe help in that area? Where we're looking at balancing childcare and instruction in a way virtually?
Dr. Vortman, do you want to speak to that or you want me to keep going?
Sure. Yeah, in each, in all three of our plans, we will be utilizing the, the services of paraeducators. To deliver instruction, whether that's virtually or in a hybrid model. And that's simply to make sure that we're providing. And that's simply to make sure that we're providing the services that the IEPs, that those para professionals are assigned to, are being implemented to fidelity.
Awesome. I just have one other question. So if we have students that enroll online and participate, they would count towards our total student counts, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And then my second question is for the virtual, or excuse me, the hybrid, every other day, would students be split or would everybody come onsite? Tuesday, Thursday, everybody stays home, Wednesday, Friday?
They would be split alphabetically, to the greatest extent possible, keeping in mind that there'll have to be flexibility within buildings to cater to the individual needs of students and families that may have, you know, different last names, but keep on the same schedule, so. But the goal will be is to keep as close to 50% of the students onsite and 50% of the students remote on those alternating days, based on alpha.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the board members?
Yeah, I just have a couple, and then most of them have already been answered, so that's, that's good. So the first one, I just want to make sure that we touch on, so I know we talked about for students, if they wanted to opt into that fully remote, and this might not be as large of a set of circumstances, but I'm sure that we do probably have some employees that might have, like, whether it's heart conditions, something like that, that does put them at higher risk. Do we have any kind of plan on, in like a hybrid model? On site, it might be less of a concern if we're comfortable to that level, but for the, especially for like the hybrid, do we have any indication on what we might do for specific employees if they would also be given some sort of option? I don't know what that would look like.
We, we have been working on that, and Mr. Millborn's been watching a lot of webinars to see what accommodations we could make to our employees. And it may even come down to placing a long-term sub in that room, but allowing the teacher to teach from home. And so those will kind of be case by case, that Mr. Millborn and his office will work with the employees as they, as we ensure that our staff and our students all feel safe. Mr. Millborn, is there anything you'd like to add to that? Because we do have a whole return to open manual that we've been creating and working through, and Dr. Agress has even given us feedback on some of the areas as it relates to COVID-19 and testing and, and working through that part that we will be presenting to the board in July. So, Mr. Millborn?
The process would be very similar to an ADA accommodation, so at first we would work with the employee to see what possible accommodations might work. What is their doctor suggesting might be an accommodation? Is that a reasonable accommodation that, that we can provide? Is it an accommodation we can't provide? Are there possible leave options? A lot of those things when they deal with family members and things of that nature. FMLA comes in as an accommodation, a leave can always be an option, so basically, we just kind of start with the employee, and each employee is going to be different based on their health and their needs, and we can work through each employee and see what accommodations they need, and then work our way down from kind of least restrictive to most restrictive.
Thank you. And then, and then the last one is just kind of touching on it, because I know, especially with like students, if we're hitting the hybrid, we might be able to work around, but in a, if we're in a situation where we have fully remote, what is our plan? Because I know we didn't have fully and all of our students able to access the resources in the optional version, and I know if it's just, if it's going to be required and graded, I don't want to necessarily see them be impacted based on that, so I know, I know we've done a few things with the expanded Blink Wi-Fi network, but do we have other ideas of what options might look like for that?
Yeah, we do. Good question. As part of the plan, obviously, we're, we're very fortunate to have the partnership of the Blink Wi-Fi Consortium. That blankets a great part of our community. We also have a strong partnership with Cox Can Eat Compete to Connect, which provides very low-cost internet access to families. We also have access to some wireless hotspots that we can deploy if needed. But we also have a contingency plan that will allow us to store work on jump drives that students will be able to plug into their Chromebooks. It won't be real-time access, but it will be enable them to take, consume all of the content that's in their Google Classroom, as well as watch videos that, of the classroom. It may be delayed, but it certainly provides them access to that learning.
And Kyle, that's a great question that you brought up, because as we studied other countries and learned about how they were dealing with parents that may be at work all day so that their students couldn't sign in and go through class, but because we had recorded that class and they can come back and learn it later, it allows the parent to sit down in the evening, maybe, that's the opportunity that the student has to go to school and have a parent present. We get some flexibility there for our students to be able to sign in and, and connect with that remote learning when it best fits the family's schedule, instead of a family thinking that someone can't go to work because they have to be online during the day, but allows us that opportunity to be able to kind of meet the needs of the family instead of being so structured that the child misses out if they can't sign in and be a part of the school day during the day. I know one of the countries that they looked at was Thailand, and in that country, they even kind of set up kind of a flex schedule of teachers. So they did have some teachers that signed up and volunteered to be online at night to answer questions for those students that could not attend school during the day because their parents worked, and there was no one else to help them.
Dr. Boardman? Oh, go ahead. No, I just had one more question. And it actually kind of led in from, from Troy, when he started talking about, you know, things outside of the school yet are still related. That brought transportation to my mind with, with busing and with the temperature checks and things of that nature. Are we going, have we started those conversations or what's the plan then? Will they be required to have their temperature checked before they got on the bus, and then again, when they get to school, or how will that? Have we looked at that yet?
So, Mr. Hamilton, Tim has, Tim and I had a meeting with the bus company a week and a half ago to talk about the transportation in the fall. They have already, Tim had been talking with them, probably a few meetings before I joined them. We're looking at how to clean the buses in between the routes. We're looking at students having temperatures taken when they get on the bus or either when they arrive at school. So we're working through those details. The bus driver, the bus company is not comfortable with the bus drivers taking the temperatures. They are preferring that we wait till they get off the buses. We are talking about, you know, social distancing the students on the bus, so we're looking at how many routes can we accommodate on each tier? We cannot, there's zero buses to add to any fleet anywhere in the U.S. The first time that we could order a bus or purchase a bus would be February of 2021, is what we were told. So every district is really looking at how do we work through the buses? The bus drivers are going to be required to wear a mask. The monitors are going to be required to wear a mask. They are going to clean, but the one point that we're still working through is students getting on the bus and coming to school, and we taking their temperatures there before they enter the building. And that is kind of the position. They'll have hand sanitizers on the bus and do accommodate as much as they can, but because of the bus and, and children on the bus, they did not believe they could do the temperatures before they entered the bus. But we're still working through that. We haven't gotten all the way through, but we're having those conversations.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, this is Troy. I guess, you know, I'd like to follow up on that. Is there any way to, you would think that having them on the bus, if they were sick, would be just awful. And is there, there's no way to require that, I would think?
I think you have to look at it as, you know, sometimes kids go to school when they're sick. And we, we can only control what we can control. Obviously, we don't want symptomatic kids getting on a bus, but I, I think the reality of it is there and we have to recognize it. There's only some part the district can do.
We would, we would have a spot to house the kids during the day, or we would ship them back home somehow?
What we're working on in the plan to reopen is they're asking for every school to have an isolation kind of spot, not in the health room where the nurse sees many students, but in another office area or some, a place we can designate for those students that may come to school with the temperature, and so we can have a parent pick up that student.
Any additional questions? One question that came to mind, to my mind, was during the closure time, our nutrition services were able to provide countless number of meals to our students. And if we are in the remote plan as well as the hybrid plan, have we learned enough information from, from our closing time to be able to provide those meals for students when and if we are in a remote or hybrid plan for most of the year or for the entire year? Would we be able to meet the nutrition requirements for our students throughout the district?
That is a great question, Dave. And as you all can see, how many moving parts and pieces we have to the puzzle here to figure out. I am thankful that Dean and I met with Lisa Stewart today, and she presented us with three options for if we were remote or fully, or in the hybrid plan. And what we have agreed upon, that Lisa now is going to work through the final details, and she'll be part of the presentation at the end of July, is really looking at our students taking home three days' worth of lunches with them. So if they are here on Tuesday and Thursday, on Thursday, they would take home the food for, I'm sorry, it's two days of lunch. They take home the food for Friday and Saturday. And if they're in a Wednesday, Friday, I'm sorry, a Tuesday, Thursday, so anyway, when the students leave, I'm getting confused now, Dean, jump in if you can remember the presentation with me. Anyway, Lisa has figured out a way, instead of having, so let me tell you why I like this option. It was really difficult for some parents to come and pick up the lunch at the school site, even though we've served over 100,000 lunches. It is hard. And so what I asked Lisa, is there a way or a means for her that when the students leave on Thursday, when the students leave on Wednesday, that the students leave with a breakfast and a lunch for the next two days? And so she is going to create that plan, and she said they could make that happen. And she is going to work on ensuring that our students leave with two days of meals and that they have those with them. What she's working on now is trying to figure out the shelf life of the milk. And because that's her concern, is the milk, not the food inside the bag and not the breakfast. The other piece that Lisa is really working on is trying to figure out, since our students won't be able to have an opportunity to have a salad bar, and a lot of students like the fruits and the salads that they get on the salad bar, is how could she prepackage those salads or those cups of fruit so that the kids have fresh fruit at lunchtime? And so she's working with her department there in Des Moines to see what is acceptable packaging, because they have to have that point of sale, but they also have to deliver it. And, but we will not be able to have salad bars at any of the levels come in the fall. So, but she has created a plan, and I'm pretty excited about it. Our students will have meals when they leave.
Can I ask one question? For Gary, are there staff right now that we've been talking to that would be high-risk under, I mean, all kinds of situations? Just on, just kind of talking to them about the next year? I know there's, you know, quite a few staff members with, you know, kind of more heart conditions and different things, you have cancer survivors and such, just curious.
Yes, yes, there's been multiple people that have reached out, either in March, when this first started. Actually, we kind of know more information now that either have personal health issues and/or may have a family member, like a child, or someone in the household with a, that might be high-risk as well, so. There, there have been multiple people that have reached out, and I assume more will be reaching out soon once we can give more information on our returned operations plan.
Dave, I might circle back. I got to do Lisa justice, because she did a really good job on three plans. So on Monday, since we're all virtual, it will still be where parents have to come by and drive and pick up the breakfast and the lunch. And on Tuesday and Thursday, the children will leave with two days of lunch and breakfast, and on Wednesday and Friday, they will leave. So that Monday was what was throwing me off, where was my third day? So the Monday will still be a virtual drive-by and pickup.
Okay. If there are no additional questions, this has been a great preview of the, the three plans that, that our staff and, and team are working on to prepare for this coming school year. And we look forward to the conversations to continue and the hard work to continue. And I can't say enough about how I appreciate what additional work that everybody is having to put forth to prepare to make sure our students are safe, our staff is safe, and that our buildings are healthy environments when we do return. So with that, if there are no further questions, we will move forward with the informational presentation on our annual library media report.
So I will have Mr. Fringer or Mr. Stiles kind of introduce this. This is a state requirement that we present this to you. So, Mr. Stiles or Mr. Fringer, I'm not sure who's going first.
It's, it's going to be me. The library media report is a requirement of the, the state of Iowa, that it be included once annually and put in front of the school board, and most of the data that you'll see in the board packet, the required data is in that spreadsheet about the, the collection. Lisa Schwartz, who is our library media program lead, is on, on the meeting tonight, in case there's questions. We didn't prepare any specific presentation for tonight beyond what's in the board packet. Really, the information presented about the year's activities and the data about the collection. If you have any questions about those data, Lisa would be here and available to answer those questions, or myself, and if there are no questions, we can move along.
Are there any questions from the board? Hearing none. Thank you for preparing these documents for us. And we'll move forward next to our resolution section of the meeting. First up is the resolution to approve for second reading the policies listed in the agenda item. Is there a motion?
I will move to approve the second reading of the policies along with the corresponding regulations. Mr. Gisner, would you like me to read off these policies in order?
Yes, please.
Okay, that includes policy 403, Employee Conflict of Interest, 403.1, Administrator Consulting and Outside Employment, 405, Harassment in the Workplace, 406, Abuse of Students by District Employees, 406.1, Complaint of Injury to or Abuse of a Student by a School Employee, 414, Military Service of Staff, 415, Licensed Personnel, 415.3, Employment of Substitute Personnel, 415.5, Licensed Personnel Assignments and Transfers, 417, Reference Checks, 417.1, Confidential Employment Information Authorization and Release, 418, Equal Employment Opportunity and Affirmation, Affirmative Action, 418.1, Compliance, Complaint Procedure, 418.2, Equal Employment Opportunity Affirmative Action, Americans with Disabilities Act Complete Form, 427, Professional Development, 428, Paid Deductions for Partial 428 paid deductions for partial day absences. 431 notification of arrest, criminal charges or abuse complaints. 637 animals in the classroom. 638 assistance animals. And 708.1 contractor insurance requirements.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lefurla. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Dr. Agress. Is there any discussion? Okay, Dr. Marillo.
Mr. Kazire, at one point, Dr. Agress asked about the new updates on Title IX. And we looked closely to see if that might fit with underneath the 405, the harassment. And in the work that Mr. Milborn and Ms. Warren has done, really researching this and sitting on numerous webinars, we have decided that we will propose a new policy to address that and the new requirements. And we plan to bring that to you. I believe we have to have that in by the beginning of April. So it will be in the July board meeting that we will add this policy.
Perfect. Thanks for looking into that. I know there's been a lot of changes and adoptions with the new laws. So I appreciate you looking into it.
Okay, if there is no. Oh, sure, Mr. Arthur.
I did have a question on, and I, and my computer's not connected right now for some stupid reason. So the, the one that talked actually about the, was the COVID in this or is that in the handle? Nevermind, that's the handbook. Good to go. Sorry for talking.
All right, before us now is a resolution to approve the second reading of the policies that Mr. Lefurla listed. Mr. Wilson, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Lefurla?
Yes.
Dr. Agress?
Yes.
Mr. McGlade?
Yes.
Ms. Shudek?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes.
Mr. Kazire?
Yes, and the resolution has been approved. Before us now, we have a resolution regarding the approval of the information technology remodel bid. Is there a motion?
I will move to approve, to approve the revisions of the job description. Am I on the right one? Oops, sorry.
We'd be on B, the approval of the IT remodel.
I apologize for that. I approve the, or I make motion to approve the bid for pinnacle contracting of Glenwood, Iowa for the information technology remodel project in the amount of $413,520.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Before us is a resolution to approve the information technology remodel bid. Mr. Wilson, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Shudek?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes.
Mr. Lefurla?
Yes.
Dr. Agress?
Yes.
Mr. McGlade?
Yes.
Mr. Kazire?
Yes, and the resolution to approve the information technology remodel bid has been approved. Before us now, we have the Technology Department reorganization and job description. Is there a motion?
Move to approve the revisions to the job descriptions listed for network specialist supervisor of data systems and network supervisor of user support, technology department organization chart and network specialist two.
Thank you, Dr. Agress. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Before us now is a resolution to approve the Technology Department reorganization and job description. Mr. Wilson, would you please call the roll?
Dr. Agress?
Yes.
Mr. McGlade?
Yes.
Mr. Lefurla?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes.
Ms. Shudek?
Yes.
Mr. Kazire?
Yes, and the resolution to approve Technology Department reorganization and job description has been approved. Before us now is the resolution regarding the professional growth systems. Is there a motion?
I'll move to, oh, go ahead. All right.
I'll move that the board approves the professional growth systems for certified staff principals and central office administrator.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Before us, we have a resolution for the professional growth systems. Mr. Wilson, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Arthur?
Yes.
Ms. Shudek?
Yes, sorry.
Mr. Lefurla?
Yes.
Dr. Agress?
Yes.
Mr. McGlade?
Yes.
Mr. Kazire?
Yes, and the resolution for professional growth systems has been approved. Before us now, we have a resolution for the approval of the employee handbook revisions. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the revised employee handbook for the 2020-2021 school year.
Thank you, Mr. Lefurla. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I would like to open up discussion if I may. Because I know that board members had received some emails from concerned employees about the personal leave. And Mr. Milborn is going to kind of address that. And so what we did was prior to the board meeting after Mr. Milborn met with CBEA and had some conversation, we moved back the leave as it was in the prior year. At first, we were thinking about pulling the board item completely, but we have, I'm not sure, can you hear?
Dr. Marillo, I think Ms. Shudek is having a hard time hearing.
Yes, and I turned up the volume, but I, are you hearing now, Ms. Shudek? Let me see if you can hear Gary and I'll turn it over Gary to explain where we are.
Can you hear me? After meeting to, after meeting today, we thought about pulling back all the handbook. But there's many important things in there that we'd like to have employees have access to July 1. So we just pulled that personal leave portion of that after realizing that maybe all members didn't get a chance to get some input and feedback on that. And our timeline's got a little crossed. So the personal leave portion has been pulled out and everything else has been proposed tonight.
But, but Mr. Milborn, you did put the personal leave back as it was in the prior year, correct?
Yes, yes, and no changes, so. No changes at all, exactly the same.
Okay.
And that is not updated in here, or is it?
Yes, it should be updated in board docs. That change was made about four o'clock, Gary. Is that when you worked with Ms. Stewart?
Correct.
Can you point out that, that portion of that so that the board members can see that the revised language has been pulled out and the language that was in the contract or the handbook, I'm sorry, last year has been updated to reflect how it read last year?
Yep, so it, it's just completely been removed from the board revision. So you won't even see it on there. It's just been completely erased, which means like anything else that isn't on there, it won't be changed at all.
On page 11 of the document, it's corrected as well and transitioned back to five days.
Yeah, you know that, we should strike that. So that, that was our note when we were meeting yesterday with the Labor Management Task Force. So that part at the bottom is not the proposed part. I could send a new one through. We, there will be no proposed changes to that. So I, I forgot our notes were at the bottom there.
Right.
So those are just your notes? That's not what's part of the handbook?
Yeah, correct. We, we, we had met yesterday because there were some questions about, to kind of get into history, there were some questions on whether it was going to go back to five days in the 21-22 year. And so yesterday we met and made those changes down there in pink to, to explicitly say, yes, it's going to go back to those five days. But after meeting today, I don't think there was consensus around that issue. So that's why up above in the actual T-chart, we removed all, removed the item completely.
Okay, so we can just mark that kind of in the, is there a way to put that in our record? On the, in the meeting notes or like our meeting notes?
I mean, I, I wonder if you could move to approve it with the exception of deleting the last half of page 11 and page 12. Or all of page 11 and page 12.
So we can make that amendment?
Is that correct, Gary?
That would be correct.
Okay.
And that would represent the conversations we had today. So that, it would change nothing moving forward if that's how it read.
Okay, so I, I'm hearing that we're wanting to strike the language on page 11 and 12. To do that, you're correct, we would need to offer an amendment to the, to the resolution. So if somebody is prepared with a resolution to amend what we're discussing, we're open for that at this time.
Move to amend the resolution to include striking page 11 and 12.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Need discussion?
Well, I know that Ms. Shudek was sort of lost audio during part of that conversation. So I'm just wondering if she heard all of that conversation regarding the personal leave being revised back to the previous years.
I, I was able to hear the end where Mr. Milborn was talking about how that was switched. I only lost any, I switched over to my, to my cell phone. For some reason, my computer lost audio. So I did hear that portion. But thank you, Chris, for making sure that I was able to hear that. My question is, is the discussion on just the amendment or the rest of it as well?
Right now, it would be just a discussion on the amendment since that is, that is what is before us at this point.
Okay.
So if there's no further discussion on the amendment, we will move for the vote. And the vote that we're looking at is to amend the resolution by striking the language on page 11 and 12 of the employee handbook. Mr. Wilson, would you please call the roll?
Dr. Agress?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes.
Ms. Shudek?
Yes.
Mr. McGlade?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur? Oh, I already called Mr. Arthur. I apologize. Mr. Lefurla?
Yes.
And Mr. Kazire?
I didn't know Mr. Arthur got two votes, but.
Yes, so the amendment has been approved. And now we can continue our discussion on the amended resolution, discussion from board members.
I guess I, Jill, you go ahead. I know you have one.
Okay, I guess my, my concern with the, with the extended medical leave or disability leave ties together with COVID. And as we talked earlier tonight and, and Mr. Milborn, you know, had mentioned, there potentially are some employees of the district that could be out for an extended period of time. Either for their own medical leave or taking care of a family member. And the, I guess the verbiage that I'm reading is that, you know, there potentially is, you know, may be terminated at the end of the, at the three months. And I'm just wondering why we're making the changes to this leave at this point in time when we know that there are potentially some more employees than normal that might need to take advantage of the, the leave.
Yeah, we actually changed that language. The original language says shall be terminated. And so we changed it to may be terminated. And then we added that whole conference part in there because it can read, shall. The original language says shall be terminated, so we wanted to soften that with may be terminated.
So I guess is there gonna, oh, sorry.
Looks like.
Too many.
We can't hear you now.
You're muted, Jill.
Sorry, too many, too many technology devices going. Is there going to be some very specific language then or guideline given to those employees that go out on the leave? A, a may, I, I appreciate the, the softening that, you know, instead of that they would be terminated to a may. But a may seems very much like it is up in the air or subjective. Depending on, you know, other things based off of, you know, where there could be some treatment, preferential treatment, things of that nature that take place. So how would, how would an employee know with a term like may in, in the procedure?
So there's additional language on page 10 that follows that sentence. I don't know if you've had an opportunity to review it. But it talks about at the conclusion of three months that the district will hold a collaborative conference with each individual employee to determine if continued employment is possible.
Yeah, I, I had read, I had read that. Thanks, Jill, for those, though, that might be looking at it. I guess just at the end of the three months, if, if we're already at the end of the three months, then, you know, if an employee doesn't know going into a leave, you know, what exactly are they looking for? And at the end of the three months, they may be terminated. To have that meeting at the end of the three months, it doesn't, it doesn't give a lot of opportunity for an employee to know ahead of time.
Yeah, just the original language said it shall automatically terminate at the end of three months. So we changed it to may terminate in three months. This is, this is a real rare, rare leave and that gets you. So when you're talking about like COVID coming up, there are numerous leave options that employees can take advantage of and use before we even get to this. This policy is really, or this language is really around someone who has an indefinite leave, like their doctor cannot tell us when they're coming back. And so after three months, instead of saying you're automatically terminated, we added in there, after three months, we'll sit back down with you and say, have you gotten any kind of update? Is there a timeline moving forward?
Okay.
Any other questions from board members?
I had a question on what I thought was just odd wording in the COVID-19 guidance. Talks about protecting the health, safety of district staff and students. And our community employees are required to enter daily health data into the health check application provided by the district. For a timeframe determined by the district, this determination will be made based on recommendations from the World Health Organization and federal and local and state guidance. Just curious, World Health Organization has not proven itself to be the most reliable lately. Not sure why that's in there.
I think when we originally wrote that, we were trying to tie it to, we didn't want to say, the message is we don't want employees to think they have to do this the entire school year. So if, if the pandemic's called off basically, then we will stop doing it. So that's where it came in there. I think at first we were advised on the World Health Organization. I know since we started working on this, that things have changed with how they're respected. And I guess we could put CDC in there or.
Yeah, I guess, or just, I'm thinking like the federal and local are gonna, federal or the state guidance is going to come from the CDC.
Yeah.
You know, so that would trump WHO guidance and a school district.
Yeah, the goal, really the goal that was just to say, we're going to be listening to the authorities so we don't have to do this all year if we don't have to.
I got you. I just did. I thought that was odd. I didn't know maybe Jill would have some insight into this that I don't, but.
Yeah, so typically your local health department follow what the state health departments are advising. And then the state health departments get their guidance from the CDC.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, if there's no further discussion, we are, we have a resolution, amended resolution for the employee handbook revisions. Mr. Wilson, would you please call them out?
Dave, would I need to make an amendment to take that portion out? I just think that's goofy to have in there.
Yes, that's a possibility if you wish to strike anything from that.
Like if it has to be approved, it has to be removed. So I guess I'd like to make an amendment that we approved the amended handbook revision, but with striking the World Health Organization from that page 37.
Okay, we have an amendment to strike on page 37.
Yeah, COVID-19 guidance.
Of the COVID-19 guidance, referencing the WHO, World Health Organization. We have a motion. Is there a second? Hearing no second, the motion to amend dies on the table. So now we move back to the amended resolution for the employees handbook revisions. Mr. Wilson, would you please call the roll?
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes.
Ms. Schudak?
No.
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Mr. McGlade?
Yes.
Mr. Kazire?
Yes, and the amended employee handbook revisions resolution has been approved. Before us now is the 2020, 2021 student fees. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the 2020, 2021 student fees as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I just have a question on how, how these are reviewed annually. It's great.
Uh, we, basically Troy, these fees have been the same fees that we've had about the last four or five years. They have not gone up. And it's the fees that we are, that we are allowed to charge under Iowa Code 301.1. And so we just basically have said that we're not going to raise fees. I remember the board a few years ago did not want to raise fees, so we did not approach that again.
I'm just curious, I know we've reduced costs a ton for folks. I want to make sure that we're not that it's a good use of our dollars on some of these, that's all.
I don't, I don't follow what you're saying, Troy.
Uh, just making sure that these, these pay for our costs, that's all. Like, I, we, we've cut our, our health, our food costs for, for our, our families tons, right? And I'm just making sure we're not robbing Peter here to, or we're not robbing other areas to cover this cost, that's all.
No, these, this only pays a small portion of those fees and anybody who qualifies for free or reduced would get a lot lower fee as shown on the schedule for the student fees.
Okay. These are more a drop in the bucket anyway on the cost.
Yeah, they're, they're a smaller amount. We've already collected this year just shy of $74,000. We had to write off about $10,000 in the month of June because people had not paid or kids, students had left the school district and we were, we were not able to collect the funds. So that's where, where that stands. We normally collect between 75,000 and 100,000 a year for these fees.
Okay.
I think the $15 annual family activity pass is awesome. It allows families and kids to get to everybody's events. So I saw that on there. That's great.
Thank you. Okay, before us now, we have a resolution to approve the 2020, 2021 student fees. Mr. Wilson, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Schudak?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Mr. McGlade?
Yes.
Mr. Kazire?
Yes, and the 2020, 2021 student fees resolution has been approved. We have a change order for a, some roof work at Rue Elementary School. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the change order from Imperial Roofing in the amount of $105,250.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we have a resolution to approve the Rue Roofing Change Order. Mr. Wilson, would you please call the roll?
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Mr. McGlade?
Yes.
Ms. Schudak?
Yeah.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes.
Mr. Kazire?
Yes, and the Rue Roofing Change Order Resolution has been approved. Before us now, we have the Standing Committee Annual Status Report. Is there a motion?
I am move we approve the Standing Committee Annual Status Report as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I would just like to thank, sorry, I would just like to thank Diane as a member who sits, uh, somebody who sits on the Policy Review Committee. I know she puts a ton of work each month into putting together the information and taking our notes as we, you know, have lively discussions and taking them back. So I just want to give a special shout out to Diane for all the work that she does on that committee.
Yes.
Anyway, I also thank all of the community members that serve on our committees and give us their time to support our district. We really are thankful for you.
Thank you. Before us now, we have the resolution to approve the Standing Committee Annual Status Report. Mr. Wilson, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Arthur?
Yes.
Ms. Schudak?
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Mr. McGlade?
Yes.
Dr. Ogres?
She's frozen.
Yes.
Mr. Kazire?
Yes. And the resolution approving the Standing Committee Annual Status Report has, has passed the test. Before us now is the Franklin Elementary Playground Equipment Bid. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the bid for the Franklin Playground Improvement Project to its construction in the amount of $33,400. For note of reference, HGM's estimate was $34,144. Dossels installed most of the playgrounds in the district.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
And this, we only received one bid for this, correct?
Yes, yes, we did. We only, we actually solicited bids. We only received one back.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you.
Sure. Okay, before us, we have a resolution to approve the Franklin Elementary School Playground Equipment Bid. Mr. Wilson, would you please call the roll?
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Mr. McGlade?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes.
Ms. Schudak?
Yeah.
Mr. Kazire?
Yes, and the resolution has been approved. Before us now, we have an approval of a 28E agreement. Is there an, is there a motion?
I'll move that we approve the amended 28E agreement with the City of Councilus and the City of Carter Lake establishing the Councilus area Wi-Fi consortium be approved as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Okay, just glad we're adding Carter Lake.
Yes, yes. Okay, if there's no discussion, we will move forward with the resolution to approve the amended 28E agreement for the Councilus area Wi-Fi consortium. Mr. Wilson, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Schudak?
Yeah.
Mr. McGlade?
Yes.
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes.
Mr. Kazire?
Yes, and the resolution has been approved. Before us now, we have an agreement with Green Hills AEA.
Yeah, I'll move that part of directors approve the agreement with Green Hills AEA for the 2020, 2021 school year.
Thank you, Mr. Arthur. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
So I know that we have multiple conversations, or at least reports from you, Dr. Marillo, on this, but what does this represent in terms of decrease in funding overall from?
Um, it's a decrease in funding of about $130,000 from last year's contract.
I don't know if we want to, we pass that at all. Was there a reason why they did not? Or what they're doing with those dollars away from us? I guess I'm just curious.
Cliff notes.
Yes, it is, it was, it is the new philosophy of the Green Hills AEA that they line up with how funding is distributed and other AEA's. So they are in the belief that how other AEA's fund their school districts or large urban school districts is how they want to align. I would say though, I believe the model that we've had in the Council of Schools has demonstrated great success for the students and families in our district. And I believe though that we will continue to work with the AEA and really become a joint effort to do the best that we can for the students and the Council of communities for their street.
And do we know, are they then reallocating those to other major schools?
No, it was not shared how they were reallocating the funds.
You're muted, Mr. Kazire.
All right, so we have completed the discussion on the AA. We're ready for the vote. Mr. Wilson, would you please call the roll regarding the 2020, 2021 Green Hills AEA agreement?
Mr. Arthur?
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Ms. Schudak?
Yes.
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Mr. McGlade?
Yeah.
Mr. Kazire?
Yes, and the resolution has been approved. Before us now is the employment contract with our superintendent. Is there a resolution?
Move to approve Councilus Community School District Superintendent Contract for the 2020, 2021 school year.
Thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second?
I think Mr. Arthur seconded it, did he?
Yes.
We have a motion and a second. Thank you. Any discussion?
Well, I guess in order to, this is a, a three-year contract that we approve on an annual basis, showing our support for the work Dr. Marillo is doing for us, and I thank her for that work.
Thank you, Mr. Arthur. Any additional discussion?
Um, yes, while I, I appreciate Dr. Marillo's work and, and everything that she's done, especially, you know, during this, this last year. I do have some reservations that I've shared previously, two of which are, you know, going in and providing a raise at this point in time when we're uncertain as far as what our economic outlook could be in the upcoming year. I understand that our budget is currently set, but in past, the state has come back and amended that budget. And so I, I do have a concern with providing the raise at that time. I also have a concern that there are permissive topics, vacation, sick leave, left in this contract. And back on the April 24th of 2018 meeting, when the permissive topics were removed from CWA contracts, it was stated, Mr. Grove asked the pointed question, would all the permissives be removed from everybody's contract? And it was stated that it would be one handbook for all employees from Dr. Marillo down. And so I, I do have a concern with voting yes with permissive topics in this contract when permissive topics like vacation and personal time was taken out of other district contracts.
Thank you for your input. Any other discussion? Hearing none, before us, we have a resolution approving the continuation of superintendent's employment contract with the Councilus Community School District Board of Directors. Mr. Wilson, would you please call the roll?
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes.
Mr. McGlade?
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Ms. Schudak?
No.
Mr. Kazire?
Yes, and the resolution has been approved. Before us now, we have a list of items in our consent agreement or consent agenda. And I'll list those quickly here. They are the approval of the memorandum of understanding with the associated builders and contractors for the Trade Works Academy credentialing. We have an agreement with the Collaborative Consulting Services. We also have approval of purchases of grade seven through 12 English Language Arts Textbooks and Materials. We have an agreement on DBQ online subscriptions for sixth through 12th grade social studies curriculum. We have our IFB membership for this coming school year. We have our UEN membership for the same school year. And we also have membership in ISFIS for this coming year. We have our Special Education Agreement with South West Iowa Apex Consortium. We have our VODAC Master Agreement. We have Special Education Contracts with the Iowa School for the Deaf. We also have Special Agent, Special Education Contract, Personnel Agenda, the May 2020 Financial Results, the May 2020 Purchasing Card Transactions, and also disbursements from May 5th through June 14th of this year. We have a motion on our consent agreement agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda as eloquently presented.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
I will second.
We have a motion and two seconds. We can only take one. But do we have any discussion at this point?
I just, I have a question on the English Language Textbooks and Materials. So is that, you buy the textbooks and they give you six years of online resources or? I'm just curious, reading through that, what's all involved there?
Yep, it's a, it's a, both a consumable tech, in this situation, that students will have access to for individual units that were chosen by the teachers. And then it also comes with online access for six years. So that's for six years of consumable and six years of online access.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll move forward with the resolution to approve our consent agenda. Mr. Wilson, would you please call the roll?
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Mr. McGlade?
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes.
Ms. Schudak?
Yes.
Mr. Kazire?
Yes, and the resolution to approve the consent agenda has been approved. With that, we have concluded our business for this evening, and I want to take time now to thank everybody. And I want to take time now to thank everybody, whether we are meeting virtually or in the ESC. Thank you for your time and your effort. I very much appreciate all the work that you do on behalf of our students and their staff. Thank you again, and we are adjourned.
Bye, everybody.
Goodbye.
Goodbye.